To bring this meeting to order, welcome everyone. Welcome to the Southwest Vermont Career Development Center regular board meeting. Public comments? Do we see any? Don't see any comments on public, I guess. Consent agendas. Minutes from the RGB full meeting on June 19th. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Fran moved and Ed seconded. Any discussions? Seeing none, all favor, raise your right hand. We got Jackie?
No, no, I'm saying yes.
Jessica? Oh, I'm sorry. Jessica?
My hand is down too fast.
I can't do the count. Janice just stepped forward. Okay, payroll warrants, 1,000, 1,001, 1,003, and number 1,005. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
There's a...
Leon's moved it, and John McDonald seconded it.
Second, and Sandy just gave me two more than I don't think three.
106, 104?
Yeah.
105, four.
There's 105 there and 104 there. We good?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
My mistake.
Any discussion on those four payroll warrants? Seeing none, all favor, raise your right hand. I believe Janice. Vendor warrants, 1,054, 1,056, 1,002, 1,004, and 1,006. Please move.
So moved.
Leon moved it?
Second.
Oh, it's a... Help me.
Ken.
Ken, my mind. Ken, second. I guess the first time, it wasn't Fran, it was you, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Seeing none, raise your right hand, please. Janice. Cash flow, we have those in our packets or around the drop box. Revenue expenses. Committee reports. We had a committee meeting just before this meeting that Fran over a little bit, I guess. Care to tell us what we did, Lynn?
The policy committee met today to, at seven at five o'clock, and to review public comments and minutes, fewer minutes from our previous meeting. In June, we made a motion to look at the organizational chart to remove information from policy, demolish Policy 7100 and move it into Policy 7195, the requirements to have an organizational chart for the Southwest Vermont Career Development Center organization. And then we spent the rest of the meeting talking about Policy Number 2600C, and that has to do with superintendent's evaluation, so we had a lot healthy discussion about what it is that we were looking at in terms of the requirements and trying to get information on how we best perform a good and formalized evaluation for policy for the superintendent. So we're still working on that. We'll be discussing that at our next meeting as well, in terms of the items and how to go about them and how to, what timeline we're trying to look at in terms of the goals and the method of evaluation. That was it.
Complimentary, Leon, it was a good meeting. Had a lot of, I thought, very useful dialogue, very good dialogue. Look forward to the next meeting. Nominations, action items. We have several people there we are nominating tonight. Would you care to give us more information on it?
I'd like to. Certainly.
I'm going to start with nomination for Special Needs Coordinator, Robbie Mara. The nomination form is in your Dropbox, a little bit of information about Robbie. She comes to us as a Vermont-certified special educator with many years in special education. Received her master's degree from George Washington University, attended University of Maryland College Park, Marlboro Graduate School, has worked in numerous schools in Vermont, as well as in Prince George's County. There were 14 applicants received, forward interviewed. You can see the interview team committee that was there, so recommending Robbie Mara for nomination for our CT Special Needs Coordinator.
So moved. Moved by Leon?
Second.
Second by John.
I just, you know, 14 people, I just think the gentleman is kind of expensive. I mean, with all the people out there, you know, maybe we could have found someone. I'm not questioning your choice, I'm just making a comment, I thought it was a little bit expensive.
I have that same thought.
The salary is tied to the teacher's contract.
Yeah.
Have any room out of that?
I understand.
She comes with a wealth of, with a lot of experience, and that's where it lands her on degree upon salary scale with teacher's contract.
But the other, the other part of that, though, is that there is not a lot required in terms of knowing and understanding the regulations and so forth. A lot of that comes with experience, and you can't, you know, you don't always get it just, just coming out of school. So if you can find somebody with some experience, I think it's probably worth the extra money rather than having to pay somebody back because you screwed up someplace along the line. I mean, it just makes, you know, it's, it's happened in other, other parts, not in this system, but in other systems, where they had to pay money back because they didn't follow the regs or they didn't, you know, do something properly. And there's also a testing component, there's all kinds of things here that we, you know, we really have to be on top of, I think.
And when we, you know, when we're interviewing, we're looking for the best candidate, and salary doesn't come into a factor for me, of where that person may or may not place. Perhaps it should, but I want the best qualified person for the position, whether they have two years of experience or 35 years of experience. That's...
That's why I need a comment, it's up to you, I just thought, you as judge of the person.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all favor, raise your right hand, please. Janice.
Second nomination tonight is, is for our Student Data Services and Guidance Assistant that is replacing Cheryl Blair, who retired back in the spring. The nomination's for Tiffany Marie Martin. Her nomination form is also in your, in your Dropbox. Tiffany comes to us with a background and associate's degree from Burton College, some experience at Southern Vermont College as well, in similar, in a similar capacity. You can see the interview committee there. We are recommending Tiffany Martin tonight for the Student Services and Guidance Assistant. As you can see, there were 23 applicants received for that position, and we interviewed eight, and chose Tiffany to bring the name for tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Leon moved, Jessica seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all favor, please raise your right hand.
One quick question, can she do everything that needs to be done, 17 hours of work higher than before?
It's not 17 hours.
Seventeen hours now.
Oh, okay, nevermind.
It's seventeen dollars.
We got it.
I didn't see a per there.
And the last nomination is for, that I have here this evening, is for our Human Services Instructor. This is to replace Stephanie Peters, who is taking the role as Guidance Coordinator here at the CDC. We're recommending Amy Prentice Rogers for the position in Human Services. Amy has a bachelor's degree from Empire State College, and also an associate's degree from Southern Vermont College in Child Development. Background, Amy's worked at the Lund Family Center, Bennington Health and Rehab, as a social worker and childcare director, and also the activities director. There were nine applicants, three were interviewed, and we're recommending that denomination go forward for Amy Prentice Rogers. She has started her teaching courses already at BTC, been here in the classroom getting things ready to go, so I hope we can have Amy on board.
I have one question.
Sure.
Oh, is this the same question?
Let's move, second first.
Move it.
John, you're seconded, discussion.
So I was wondering, does she also have a degree in social work?
I'd have to look at her resume particularly, I don't...
Because I just saw that she had these other degrees, and I didn't see one in social work, yet she was a social worker.
Yeah.
I don't have the answer either.
Okay.
In front of the Senate.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment on this. Criminal background check has been complete and on file. Fingerprints also?
Yes. Everything's fine.
And I was going to ask about the two other people I see. The first one, Robbie, hers is complete and on file?
Correct, everything's fine.
And then Tiffany says in progress right now.
Correct.
I guess I'll just compliment you for making sure they're all in.
Well, thank the state for making sure.
Well, it's been a pet peeve of mine that we're allowing people in here without them. I'm very happy to see that they have been done before they've come in there.
We should also note that these are replacement positions for people that have left.
Yes.
We're not hiring new people, new positions.
The one thing I did find a little funny, if we go to another, one of the candidates who's in progress, that person taught or was employed by a college, and they haven't had a background check already, that seems odd to me.
And all the years I worked on college campuses, I never had a background check.
Really? Okay.
Fifteen years, yeah.
I don't understand that. This has, it has nothing to do with this boy, I mean, this boy has one, have to have that done.
Yeah.
So if they're just new to us, then we're doing it all over again.
Yeah, I'm not finding a complaint, I just found it odd is all, I was just out of curiosity. I would have thought college would have the background checks just as well as we would.
Well, I don't know that it, what I'm trying to say, I don't know whether they did one or not in college, where did we get that from?
Well, she was, she was employed in Southern Vermont College for the last four years.
Yeah, but that wouldn't count for us.
Ten duties.
That's what I'm trying to say, that wouldn't count for the Career Development Center in part of the employment year. It's a requirement that you have all of those done on everybody when they come in new to the school system, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so...
Do you people have had previous background checks?
Correct. Other school systems, we can take what's called a second dissemination, and we do that routinely, particularly if they're fingerprint, fingerprint backgrounds.
Right.
If they've worked in a school system, we can take a second dissemination. It's as good as a new fingerprint.
That's all I was saying, I figured it'd happen by now. Anyways.
Ricky, if I could, if I could address Jessica's earlier question.
Did the question come up about having the board be fingerprinted also? Background checks?
That was another discussion we had some time ago in policy, wasn't it?
Well, I just saw it on this policy, you know, the questions from the meeting. Was that answered?
No.
At the meeting?
No.
We, we go through the criminal background check because it's required by state law.
Who's we?
The school.
The school, the board.
So everybody at this table has had a criminal background check and fingerprinted?
No, it's only people that have everyday contact...
Unsupervised, right.
With contact with students.
Okay.
I think there was, there was quite a discussion on the minutes about what the difference between a background check is and a criminal records check. I mean, there's some confusion about what those two, those two things are. I'm recalling from the minutes from eight weeks ago that that's what that's, we had a pretty healthy discussion about that, clarifying what is a background check, what is a records check, what is a fingerprint check, which are all a little bit different.
You get a background check by getting a gun, so I've had it on the other, but we want the criminal background with fingerprints.
Right. Well, the, the only reason I ask is it would seem to people already say, it would seem that in Vermont especially, or maybe it's because it's a lesser crime, there's, there's a lot of financial gerrymandering, for lack of another term, and I would think anybody who works in the school should have a background check, whether they work with children or not.
I think, I think the issue is, do we also then include the volunteers? Do we also include the students who are here for adult classes? I mean, it's, personally, I'd have everybody background, it's not going to hurt you, but I'm not sure that we can afford it, number one, and number two, I'm not sure that, you know, people want to come here if they're going to get a background check.
I just meant people who work in the office.
Yeah, I know.
Right, they, they all have criminal background checks.
Good.
It's our policy, any employee has a criminal background check. Ricky, if I could answer Jackie's question earlier of Amy's degree, I did pull up her resume. Her Bachelor of Science from Empire State is in Community and Human Services, and her Associate's in Arts from SBC is in Child Development.
Yeah, I read that in her resume, but I didn't know how she got to work as a social worker.
I think that was just the title of the former position at Bennington Health and Rehab. You'll have to come in and have a cup of coffee, whether Jackie can ask.
Yeah.
Okay, Lynn, do you want to talk about your policies for transportation and emergency closing?
Not really.
Okay. I'll take it up next one.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, transportation policy is, well, I'm off here, it's for the Career Development Center in terms of making sure that we have licensed individuals that do the certain jobs that they do, and we meet the requirements of transportation regulations in that policy, so it was a little cleaning up of that, and that was basically all that happened there. So unless somebody else got some, some questions about things out there, I think we got everything covered. And that was what we was, on that for a warning, oh, except, that's a warning, I think. I'm missing that, I don't know. Yeah, policies, okay, that was one, Transportation 3100, I was on a different page on there. On the laptop here, and so if there's no questions, I'd like to entertain a motion for the warning of this.
So moved.
Second.
Ed moved, John McDonald seconded. Any further discussion on the transportation policy? Seeing none, please raise your right hand.
I thought we automatically went through license check for people that would be driving vehicles and transporting students.
I'm not clear what you mean when you say automatic. I mean, we got a policy here, is there something in there?
No, I don't object to anything in the policy, I just thought we automatically did that, regardless of the policy.
We, well, if we did, we still have to have a policy in place for that, and to cover us as a board, we got to do that, and that's what this is, going through this and making sure that we legally have what we are supposed to meet in terms of the requirements, and that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing. The next policy is the emergency, that's, here, 3200, emergency closing, and this, this policy deals with the safety of our students and so forth, and that we have one that gives the superintendent certain types of lead weight in terms of closing the school, ending it early, having a lockdown, all this other stuff that needed to happen out there. So that's what this policy deals with, is making sure that we have a safe environment for learning, and that we, in the cases where necessary, if something need to happen, the superintendent has the authority to make adjustments to the day, to consider that. That's it.
Is that, is an adjustment automatically coordinated with MAU and...
It is coordinated, but not...
Transportation for outlying districts?
But it may not necessarily just be communicated with MAU, since we have multiple districts to work with. Do we generally follow the closings and delay schedules of the SVSU? Yes, we do, but this policy allows that, you know, for us to follow that or not follow that. I mean, we always try to do it in conjunction with other school districts, but there are times when Arlington might be open and we're not, or, you know, BDA is open or closed and we're not. I mean, it just allows for, policy-wise, for, for me to adjust the day if needed for our school.
Right.
You know, it could be, it could be situational for the day, it doesn't necessarily be weather-related like Neon said. You know, we, as an example, it'll be in my superintendent's report, and it's not about closing or delaying school, but we're having a stagger start this year to the school year. MAU under upperclassmen are not starting until a day after we're starting. Yet we're open and running transportation, have school that day, so that's an adjustment to a schedule, you know, we're, we're decided to be open and running because we have multiple districts and students coming, so we're adjusting our day to make that work. We kind of do that all the time.
Okay, I see the need for...
Do we have a motion to move it, please?
I thought, yeah, I'm sorry if I didn't ask, but if we have a motion to move it, please.
Second.
Moved it.
I'll move it.
Jessica moved it.
Jessica seconded.
John McDonald seconded.
Is there a discussion now?
Yes, there is a discussion now.
So, one of, one of my suggestions to include, besides all these TV channels and radio channels, is maybe a Twitter account for parents.
Okay, so that's in the administrative regs board, which the superintendent can take that on the advisement, in terms of school closing notification, that's all.
Could maybe not, not restricted to just Twitter, it could be social media, you know, period, which we do currently with our Facebook page, and we could certainly add other social media types to that.
Yeah, and I'm saying that that's in the administrative regs, so that won't affect the policy. Administrative regs is there for you to adjust in accordance with the policy, and if that's something that you think you need to have in there to...
And, and my suggestion is merely because a lot of people don't listen to standard radio stations, and a lot of them have Pandora coming into their car, they get this alert on their phone and they're alerted, you know, and it helps.
It's a great suggestion.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all favor, raise your right hand, please. Janice.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leon. Superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening, everybody. It's kind of hard to believe we've, it's been eight weeks since we've met, believe it or not, it has been. We met last time school was ending, and we're meeting as school is, is starting next week. It's, I don't know where this one was gone to. So, school starts on August 30th, four teachers return on next Wednesday for three days of professional development. Welcome back letters go out tomorrow morning. We have three full days of professional development. On Friday, September 1st, we have our school consultant, Linda Jackson, who you've heard me talk about before, she's presented to us remotely, she'll be here conducting a full day of professional development with the teachers, on what's called framing, framing the lesson, and writing quality objectives and early work standards, which is something we've implemented last year, and also to revisit our focus teams that we created last year, that have been kind of set to the side due to our NEAS reaccreditation. This fall, NEAS will be here to re-accredit our school, it's their decennial visit. Our teachers and staff, everyone has worked very hard over the past school year to complete this report for NEAS. It is under all new standards. The old report is, has little nobility anymore. We are only the second school in New England to be put under the new standards, so that's either really good for us, or we're the model to follow, I don't know. You know, it's, the study's been very good for us to take a look at what we do really well in the areas that we can improve upon, as in any school and any organization, and so we're actually looking forward to the visit by NEAS. We're looking forward to being completed with reports. One of the, half of one of the days next week, we completing those reports. We've had two staff members working tirelessly most of the summer reviewing reports. If we were to print it out for you and put it in front of you, it would probably be 500 pages or more of self-report data on our school, and so it's been a huge undertaking. We considered at some point before last year not continuing accreditation with NEAS and perhaps choosing another, another accrediting agency, but our school consultant, who certainly could have talked us out of it, said you need to keep your accreditation as a school and not seek alternate accreditation. So that's what we did, so we're still working with SRAV and tech centers that work, and NEAS is our accrediting tool. What's interesting is they both have brought up similar areas in which we need, which we need to address, things like common curriculum mapping, common curriculum and planning time, and they're things that, they're equal, which is kind of nice to see. So, students are back September 5th for us, for the CDC. Mount Anthony, only freshmen started in that day, they're starting a new model this year with a freshman introduction, which I think is great, just causes us to stagger our start a little bit, and we have some different activities planned for our non-MAU students that day. What we are looking at probably doing is having a welcome back barbecue, as well as a welcome back breakfast or brunch for our returning year two students from, that are not Mount Anthony students, and to welcome them back to campus. That's also going to include our new students from Hueset Falls, which I'm happy to report to you, are still on track. As of later today, there are more interviews going on for cosmetology and law enforcement. That number of 12 is still staying solid. We've had to adjust some students because New York State, they have the region's requirements, Vermont we don't. Students who may have passed regions in the spring had a chance to retake them just last week, and were able to get slots in our programs. Very interesting working with a different state versus a different town or a different school district, and making all these things work, including, you know, revisiting, what credit does, does law enforcement have? Can it be a civics credit, or can it be something else? You know, having those discussions with other school districts that are not Mount Anthony, because state regs say what schools have to accept for credit for classes, but those other schools can adopt other credit-bearing coursework, you know, from our tech courses. If, and I'm not making this up, but Hueset Falls determines that one-year law enforcement equals what they consider a civics course, they can take that, that's great. If they consider taking manufacturing technology equals a tech credit for them, and a math credit, and a science credit, that's up to their school board and their school system, so that's, that's great. Those discussions have been ongoing with, with Patrick Daly, who's the new principal in Hueset Falls, so that's all good news. This summer's been very busy for your administrative team, and your office, and your office staff, and facilities crew, everyone, everyone, it's been a busy summer. We have had our own construction woes here at school, certainly not with, the BSD is undergoing a massive reconstruction, but we've had our roofing project, which was huge sections of roof that has been completed. We've had some room upgrades with HVAC and ventilation changes, I'm happy to report those are completed and on schedule. This summer, I know I told you at the end of the school year, we were taking a large number of teachers to the National Conference for High Schools That Work and Tech Centers That Work. There were nine of us that went to that in Nashville, Kentucky, well-received, unbelievable amount of professional development, and the number of workshops, I think there were 596, some workshops in the course of three days that people could take. There were certainly not a lack to choose from. It was well-attended, great professional development, and, what am I looking for? I want to say bonding with faculty and staff, but, you know, creating a culture with faculty and staff, it was, it was really great. Also, we attended, Meg, myself, and Stephanie Mulligan, who couldn't be with us tonight on a pre-planned vacation, but I know she's listening up there in the world, attended the VPA Leadership Academy at Killington, August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd. the VPA Leadership Academy at Killington, August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd, and listened to a very good presentation by Jimmy Cassis, a speaker, a national speaker, representing school principals and tech center directors. It was very good. We attended a two-day session on building culture and working with, working with people. It was, it was really, really good, and so we're busy with that. Trying to think what else from my list here. It's just been a busy summer, like it always is. You know, maintenance staff has worked very hard to keep our facility looking great. Our facility is aging, it is 22 years old or so now, hence the need for the roofs, et cetera. You know, you've have, we've had more equipment come in for manufacturing, and teachers are starting to come back in the door, as, well, all summer teachers have been here, but in and out, particularly now, getting classrooms set back up, and getting ready to start the school year again. What's amazing to me, as I had a chance to write our welcome back letter, is that for us in education, we measure years in school years, not in calendar years. You know, we don't work from January to January, it's June to July, and so what's neat is you get a chance to, every August, we'll say September, you get a chance to reset, and start over again, and start new traditions or continue old ones. It's kind of, it's really neat. You know, we don't live January to January, we live by bells, and from June to July. So, it's fun, although it's a different pace in the summertime, I look forward to having students back in the hallways, I look forward to having teachers back every day, and being here, and having, living by a bell again, because it's what we're so used to doing. So that's, that's what I have. I would like to mention, unless you want to talk about adult ed, Meg, I can.
I might add too.
All right. So, as you know, you've kind of given us the leverage to take a look at what is adult ed, what isn't adult ed, let's try some things, let's not try some things, et cetera. So, I don't want you to think we've forgotten about that, because we certainly haven't. Just last, just had, last week, we met with Melanie Letourneau from the Vermont Department of Labor, to kind of reset and give us some more ideas, and one of the ones I want to tell you, that will likely come to fruition for the fall, which is, it's a different model, but it's a great model, is that the Vermont Department of Labor has connections, particularly in the building industry, and wants to, there's people who want to do apprenticeships, and she wants four people to start this apprenticeship program. And, so, Meg and I, I thought of at least two people, two students who graduated out of our Building Trades Program, who are working in the field, but we would like to see them get additional certifications and work with the Vermont Department of Labor for this apprenticeship program. And, in speaking with the instructor, I think we're going to have four or more. Now, we've got to get them to buy onto this, but it's going to be, it's going to be great. It is what I looked at as the three-pronged approach to continuing a 13th year. These are adult students, they may be 18, but they're considered an adult because they've graduated high school, where they are back with us in some classroom capacity, whether that be a blended learning component in our class, a apprenticeship or an internship-based, and then an academic piece, so a three-piece component to grade, I'll call it grade 13, that's what it is, for those students who may not be ready to go to post-secondary, or they don't choose to go to post-secondary, we can provide them additional certifications and pathways for them in their 13th year. The meeting with Melanie was great, a lot of great ideas came out of it, and we are sticking with what our gut tells us, which is have two to three strong foundation programs for our adult ed. We're still going to do on-demand learning as requested by business and industry, we're not going anywhere, and we're still, we're here, but our foundation programs are still going to be, we're going to run one cohort of LNA. It's not going to be this fall, it's going to be in January. That is what Melanie recommends, is what we're looking to do. We're going to run a CDL program. Those are two great foundation programs that the community needs and a set that we need, and so we're going to focus on those foundation programs, and then fill in where we can, and where the need is, for, for example, students in a grade 13, customized classes for business and industry. We did more customized classes last year than I realized that we did for business. They weren't necessarily ran here on site, you know, they were run out of business and industry, and so, for the public that's listening, we're not going anywhere for that, we're still here, but we're not going to be offering, you know, 150 or 200 courses that most won't run. There are a lot of resources in our community, and in our county, and the area in which we serve, a lot of resources, and, you know, we don't need to compete with all those other resources, we need to complement those resources that are in our region. I want to say we saw it with our summer camps last year, and it's a correlation for, I believe, adult ed. Our summer camps last year, albeit we put them out a little bit later than we thought, or than we wanted to, one of them ran, the other ones didn't. There was not a lot of interest for some reason, and I know we marketed it to death, I know we did, but the one camp ran, and so this summer, we decided to continue our relationship with the Bennington Police Department in their new experiences camp, which has been very successful for us, and we've run with them for at least five years, and it's great. We didn't run any of their programs this year. There are so many opportunities for students in our region, that we need to find a way and continue to complement the services and not compete with them, and, you know, that is maybe an over-simplified statement for adult ed, but that's, I think what Meg and I are on the same page with, and I hope that you all will be as well as we go forward with this new school year.
We also have, have the advantage of an online learning tool, Ed2Go, and there's a wide variety of courses on that, and it's certification courses, it's enrichment courses, that I think is easy for us to promote, and, you know, people register for them and do them on their own. We have seen a lot of success from that, in fact, three people, no, actually, it's up to four people in the local community have registered for a supply management course from one of the local manufacturers, so, you know, I think, I think that's a resource that is good for us to promote at this time.
And other resources that we, I don't think we realize that we, I mean, we knew we had them, but really hadn't thought of them in this capacity, is our partnership with VTPLC, which is the Vermont Virtual Learning Cooperative. We've used it historically to help students, high school students, who, maybe they can't take a class in med professions because they have to take another science class, or an English class is bumped up against it, and they just can't take it. And we can offer that to them via online, at no cost to the districts or to us, and the membership fee we pay, but we learned at the VPA, in speaking with the director of VTPLC, that those seats could also be, can also be used for adult students. They don't, they're not just tied to students in a traditional 9 and 12 setting, those seats are ours as we want to use them. And when we talked with Melanie last week, I know, I think her eyes kind of opened up too, like, wow, there are courses on here that we could use to get folks, for example, math and algebra, to get them, take those first before they enroll in an LNA or something else, so they're, prepping them for other coursework, and that, at no cost to them, it's part of doing our business, and so, it's kind of a neat to, I don't want to say sit back, but take a step back and look at the resources that we have, and how can we utilize them differently, and be more efficient with what we have. So that's kind of been what we're doing. It's kind of a long-winded answer, I apologize, but it's been eight weeks, so.
You haven't talked to anybody.
Exactly. You missed us.
You missed your guys.
He's only had me and Sandy to talk to.
That explains it, right? Okay. Yes, Lynn?
On the report, we had a meeting, 8:15, 17, this board did-
8:15?
... ratify the teacher's contract.
Yes, we did.
Okay, so, I'm looking, I'm looking, man, it's in a, I guess, a conversation to say something along that line.
We, yes, this board met last on the 15th of August, with a roundtable meeting with all the school boards, at the middle school, to vote and ratify the teacher's contract. And so, there was a majority of the board there, and now this board did vote in favor, along with all the other boards, to approve and ratify the teacher's collective bargaining agreement, which is a two-year agreement, that will be retroactive to July 1st for two years. The adult sheet in front of me, the major changes, the biggest change in that is healthcare, that was really the most, biggest thing up for discussion, because everyone tells there are changes in January, I won't get into all the details here, it's complicated at best, but it affects everybody, and I do want to thank both sides of the negotiating team, I think, to work very hard to come to reasonable negotiations on something that's pretty unknown, which is healthcare. It's really unknown for everybody. There are some minor language, I'll say minor language changes throughout the contract, some that affect us here, one that affects us here at the CDC, was there was a section of the contract that did not allow anyone other than myself or my designee, which in this case would be Meg, for example, to do a teacher evaluation, and we ran up to a problem with our classes having dual enrollment credit through, whether it be CCV, VTC, whatever post-secondary institution, not being able to come in and evaluate the academic content to award that credit. And so, through language change in the contract, that is now allowable. Still not a teacher evaluation, it's an evaluation of that academic contact, since that college is going to be awarding that credit. That's really the biggest change for us here at the CDC. That's a positive change, and I don't think that the teachers see it as anything but that as well. A lot of hard work went into that negotiated settlement, I know it did, many, many hours, so thank you to everyone for working diligently on that.
Just checking to see if you have any other thoughts on that.
Well, no, I wouldn't say anything, I just wanted to make sure that we realized that we didn't-
Glad you brought it up, glad to hear it.
We're still waiting for the-
You still talking, that's all.
For the final ESP contract, you're right?
Right.
Yes?
Yeah, that's going on, we've reached an agreement, and we're just finalizing the-
The language.
The language between the two parties, for the legal ease, and then we'll have another carousel meeting.
Is there any other discussion people would like to have, comments? Francis?
Dave Frederickson on the MAU board had asked me to ask the CDC board, or Mike, he brought up the fact of the podium that we have for graduation, well, it's the same podium that, when I graduated in '70 is there, so it's been there since the beginning of time, and wondered if the CDC would be interested in designing and building a new podium for next year. So I just bring that up, and I think it would be a good thing, maybe designing Barbara Ackerman's, I don't know who does that, what-
It could certainly be a joint collaboration with-
Yeah, and then, you know, build a nice podium, and ask the principals what they want there, and maybe they want a CD player there, who knows, but, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying a different podium, I'm not-
I think that's a great idea, Fred.
Okay, all right, I brought it to the board.
The right parties.
Yeah, but that's something that should have went through the school over there, to communicate back in terms of, that I know you brought it, but we're trying to make sure that the school administrators work with administrators on certain things along that line.
I'm sure Mike will get with the principal and-
Absolutely.
-coordinate it all, that'd be perfect. Thank you.
Put some on one. Here we go. Just for that, just remember that.
I'm just joking, because I'm on that board too, so.
Okay, anything else up for discussion? Seeing none? Do I have any motion to adjourn? So moved.
No chairs report, are you done?
I'm done, everybody, right after the superintendent.
Okay. Then I moved it, we adjourned.
Second. All right, we moved by Lynn Lanfran, and we second by Ed Letourneau, all favor? Unanimous, good night, everyone.